லுக்கா அழித்த சுவிசேஷம் 2 மதிகாரம் 36, 37, 38
கோஸ்பல் 2, ஸைன் லுக் செப்டர் 2, வஸ் 34, 35 and 36
36 to 38
And there was one, Anna, a prophetess, the daughter of Phanuel, of the tribe of Asur. She was of great age and had lived with an husband seven years from her virginity. And she was a widow of about four score and four years, which departed not from the temple but served God with fastings and prayers night and day. And she coming in that instant gave thanks likewise unto the Lord and speak of him to all them that looked for redemption in Genesis.
ஆசேருடைய கோத்திரத்தாலும் பானுவேலின் குமாரத்தியமாகிய அன்னாலென்னம் ஒரு தீர்க்குதர்சி இருந்தால் அவள் கண்ணிப்பிராயத்தில் விபாகமானது முதல் 7 வர்ஷம் புர்சனொடினை வாங்குதவளும் அதிக வயது செஞ்சொலமாயிருந்தால் ஏறகுறிய எண்பத்தினாலும் வயதுல்லா அந்த விதவை தேவானைத்து விட்டு நீங்காமல் இரவும் பகலம் உபவாசித்து ஜெபம் பண்ணி ஆராதனை செய்துகொண்டுருந்தால் அவளும் அன்னேரத்திலே வந்து நின்று கத்தரி புகந்து எர்சிலேமே மீட்புண்டாக காத்திருந்த யாவருக்கும் அவரிக்குறுத்து பேசலாம்
கத்தருடைய பரிசுத்த நாமதுக்கு மைமுண்டாவுதா?
May the God solely be with you glorified
இங்கே அன்னால் இருந்த ஒரு சகோதரியைக் குறித்து நாம் படிக்கோம்
Here we are reading about a sister named Anna
நமக்கு எல்லாருக்கு அதிகமாக பரிச்சியமான ஆள் வந்து பழையர்ப்பாட்டில் உள்ள அன்னாள்
And we all practice the Anna in the Old Testament
ஆனா, புரியர்ப்பாட்டில் ஒரு அன்னாள் இருக்குறால் என்பதை நாம் புரிந்து கொள்ளவேற்றோம்
We have to understand there is Anna in New Testament also
பழையர்ப்பாட்டு அன்னாளுக்கும் புரியர்ப்பாட்ட அன்னாளுக்கும் பெரிய வித்யாசம் இருக்குறது
And there is a great difference between the Old Testament Hannah and New Testament Anna
பழையர்ப்பாட்டு அன்னாலைக் குறித்து கொஞ்சம் விரிவாகச் சொல்லப்பட்டாலும் ஆளமாகச் சொல்லப்படவில்லை
Even when it is not explained in this Old Testament about Hannah, it is not mentioned very deep
விரிவாகச் சொல்லப்பட்டாலும் ஆளமாகச் சொல்லப்படவில்லை
Even if it is mentioned in brief, it was not mentioned so deep
இவள பொற்றி விரிவாகச் சொல்லப்படவில்லை ஆனால் ஆளமாகச் சொல்லப்படுகிற
And here she was not mentioned so brief but it was mentioned so deep
தமிழ்ல சொல்லுவா? அகல உளுவதிலும் ஆள உளுவது நல்லது அகலமா உளுகுறது விட ஆளமா உளுகுறது நல்லதுன்னு சொல்லும்
It is better to plough more widely than to deep
இன்னைக்கு நாம் அன்னாலைக் குறித்து படிக்கப்போவோம்
Today we are going to study about Anna
லாஸ்ட்வீக் நம்ம சிமியோனா குறித்து படித்தோம்
Last week we meditated about Simeon
தனிமனித வாள்வை படிக்கும்பொழுது நம்முடைய வாள்வூடு ஒப்பிட்டுப் பார்த்து நம்முடைய குறைவு நெரைவுகளை சரிபடித்துக்கொளலாம்
When we study or meditate about the personal person's life and we can make such right our life
புரியர்ப்பாட்ட அன்னாலைக் குறித்து படிக்கும்பொழுது மூன்றே வசனங்கள்
When we tell about this that the New Testament Anna, there are only three verses
ஆனா இதில் பெரிய டெப்ட் இருக்குறது
That there is a great depth in it
அவளுடைய கோத்திரம் சொல்லப்பட்டுருக்கிறது
And pride was mentioned here
அவள் யாருடைய குமாரத்தியந்து சொல்லப்பட்டுருக்கிற
And it mentions on whose daughter she was
அவளுடைய ஸ்பிரிசுவல் ஸ்டாண்டர்ட் சொல்லப்பட்டுருக்கிற
And her spiritual standard was mentioned
அதே நிறத்தன் உலக வாள்கீல அவளுக்குள்ள எளப்புகளும் சுட்டிகாட்டப்படுகிற
And some of the losses that take place in her worldly life is also mentioned
நாம் இதைக் குறித்து கொஞ்சம் விரிவாகப் பார்க்குறோம்
And let us see in brief
முதலாவது அவள் ஆசேர் கோத்திரதை செய்ந்த
And first she belonged to the tribe of Asur
ஆசேர் எந்து சொன்னால் பைபில்ல அர்த்தம் சொல்லப்பட்டுருக்கிறது சந்தோஷம் இலவற்றல் பாக்கியவன்
Asur means a blessed or he is full of joy
ஒரு தேவனுடைய பிளிணுடைய வாள்கீல உலக பிரகாரமான சந்தோஷிய இருக்கோ இலியோ ஆவிக்குறிய விதத்திலே அவனு ஒரு சந்தோஷமுள்ளவனாக பாக்கியவனாக இருக்கவேற்றோம்
A child of God, whether he may be in glad or joy in this worldly life, he should have the joy and gladness and blessedness in the spiritual life
ஆசேர் முர்பிடாக்கில் ஒராள்
And Asur, he was one of among the fathers
யாக்கோவினுடைய ஒரு குமார
And he is the son of Jacob
அவனுடைய வாள்கை பற்றி பைபில்ல நாம் ரெண்டு அடங்கள்ல பார்க்கோம்
And we can see his life in the two places in Bible
ஒன்று ஆதியாகமும் நாபத்தியூன்பதிலே அவனுடைய தகப்பன் அவனைப் பற்றி பேசுகிற
In Genesis chapter forty-nine, his father speaks about him
ஆது உபாகமும் முப்பத்திமூனா மதிகாரத்தில் ஊளியக்கார்நாகிய மோசே அவனிக் குறித்து பேசுகிற
And Deutonomy chapter thirty-three, the servant of God Moses is speaking about him
செல வேத பகுதிகளை நீங்கள் படிக்கும்பொழுது
When we read about some of the scriptures
ஆதியாகமும் நாபத்தியூன்பதிலே பார்க்கும்பொழுது தன்னுடைய பிள்ளைகளைக் குறித்து ஒவ்வொரு விதங்கிலே யாக்கோவுச் சொன்னதை நீங்கள் பார்க்கலாம்
In Genesis chapter forty-nine, and he is giving a certificate about every son in the Genesis chapter forty-nine
அப்படி தகப்பனாலே குற்றஞ்சாட்டப்பட்ட செல பிள்ளைகள் உபாகமும் முன்றுல பார்க்கும்பொழுது ஊளியாலே பறாட்டப்பட்டுருக்கிறார்கள்
And who was accused by his father in Genesis forty-nine and was accepted and certified by Moses in Deutonomy chapter thirty-three
ரூபனைக் குறித்து உபாகமத்திலே நாம் ஆதியாகமத்தில பார்க்கும்பொழுது அவனைத் தாருமாராக சபிக்கிறார்
And when we look into Ruben in chapter forty-nine of Genesis, and he was purposely cursing him
ஆனா மோசே அவனைக் குறித்து பேசும்பொழுது ரூபன் பிடைப்பானாக அவினு சொல்லும்
But when Moses speak about him, he said so, and Ruben pressed
ஆனால் நாம் இந்த நாட்களிலே பாக்கியவன்களாய் மாறும்
So we should become a blessed one in these days
கிருஷ்டவ வாள்கீல நம் நிர்ப்பாக்கியமுள்ளவர்களாய் மாறக்கூடாது
In Christian life, we should not become a rich state
ஒரு தேவனுடைய பிள்ளை எப்பொழுதும் பாக்கியவனாக இருக்கும்
A child of God always must be a blessed one
இப்ப நாம் பாக்கியவன் என்ற சப்ஜெட்ல போனான்னா மூனு மாசம் பேசலாம்
If I want to speak about this topic of blessedness, I can speak for three months
என்ன பழையர்ப்பாட்டில் எவ்வளோ பாக்கியவன்கள் இருக்கறார்கள் பிக்குரிய பாட்டில் ஏசுவே ஒரு கூட்டம் பாக்கியவன்களை அறிமோபபடுத்துகிற
In Old Testament, there are many blessed people. We can find that in New Testament, Jesus was introducing many blessed people
மலைப்ரசங்கத்தில் ஏசு என்ன சொல்கிறார்? இருதேயித்தில் சுத்தமுள்ளவர்கள் பாக்கியவாங்க
About preaching in a sermon what Jesus said and whose pure in heart are blessed
128 ம் சங்கிதம் ஒன்று என்ன சொல்லுகிறது? கத்தருக்கு பயந்து நடக்கிற மன்னிஷ ஹ? ஆ, அப்ப இதிலும் என்ன விளங்கிக்கொள்ளறோம்?
And what we understand from this
நாம் இந்த நாட்களில் பாக்கியவன்களாய் மாறும்
And we should become a blessed in these days
ஆவிக்குறிய வாள்கீல வந்துட்டு பிறகு
After coming to the spiritual life
நம் நிர்ப்பாக்கியமுள்ளவர்களாய் மாறக்கூடாது
And we should not become a rich man
நீங்கள் சபையைக் குறித்து சபைகளைக் குறித்து ஏழு சபைகளைக் குறித்து வெளிபடுத்தலே படிக்கலாம்
We can read about the seven churches in Book of Revelation
அதில் ஒரு சபையைப் பற்றி நீங்கள் பார்த்தீங்கன்னா
When we meditate about one of the church
அது பரிதுப்பிக்கப்படத்தக்க ஒரு நிர்ப்பாக்கியமுள்ளது And மூன்று வெளிபடுத்தல் மூன்று பதினேழு
And three seventeen of Revelation
நீ நிர்ப்பாக்கியமுள்ளவனா?
நிர்ப்பாக்கியமுள்ளவன்
And you are rich
ஒரு ஆவிக்குறிய சபைனுடைய நெலவரம் எவ்வளோ மோசமாக இருக்குறதந்து நீங்கள் பார்த்து
You can see how bad and worse the state of this spiritual church
நாம் நிர்ப்பாக்கியமுள்ளவர்கள் அல்ல
And we are not a rich one
நாம் பாக்கியவன்களாய் மாறும்
And we must become a blessed one
நான் தான் சொன்ன பாக்கியவன் கொந்துருக்குறது ஒரு பெரிய சப்ஜெட்
And that's why I said and blessedness is a great subject
ஆனா, நீ பாக்கியவனா இல்லென்னா நீ முதலாம் ஊய்திரத்திலுக்கு பங்குள்ளவனாய் மாறமாட்டாய்
If you are not blessed and you cannot take part in the first resurrection
முதலாம் ஊய்திரத்திலுக்கு பங்குள்ளவன் பாக்கியவனும் பரிசுதவனுமாயிருக்கிற
And he who is a part of the first resurrection is a holy and blessed
அப்ப இதிலும் என்ன விளங்கிக்கொள்ளுறோம்?
What do we understand from this?
ஒரு தேவனுடைய பிள்ளை பாக்கியவனா இருந்தாதா முதலாம் ஊய்திரத்திலுக்கு வாருவான்
A child of God who is taking part in this first resurrection and who is blessed and holy
முதலாம் ஊய்திரத்தில் பங்குடையாவிட்டால் நம்முடைய வாள்கீல மேன்மேனா வடையமுடியாது
If you are not taking part in the first resurrection and you cannot attain the greatness in your life
வாசிங்க
வெளிபடுத்தல் இருவதா மதிகார ஆராவசனம் முதலாம் ஊய்திரத்திலுக்கு பங்குள்ளவன் பாக்கியவனும் பரிசுதவனுமாயிருக்கிற
அவ பெஸ்ட் யாரா மாறுறான் யாரா மாறுறான் பாக்கியவன் ரெண்டாவது யாரா மாறுறான் அவன் பரிசுதவனாய் மாறுத
And first he become a blessed and secondly he become the holy one
அப்ப கிருஷ்டவ வாள்கீலும் முதலாவது நாம் பாக்கியவன்களாய் மாறும்
In the Christian life and we must become a blessed one
ஆவிக்குறிய வாள்கீல வந்துட்டு பிறகு நீங்க பாக்கியவன்களாய் மாற வேண்டியது அவசியம்
After coming to the spiritual life, it is very needed for you should become a holy and blessed
நமக்கு ரச்சிப்பு கொடுத்தது ஒரு பாக்கியவன்
And salvation is given to us and that it is a blessedness
முழு உலகத்துக்காக ஏசு ரத்தம் சிந்திநாலும்
Even the Lord should wait for the whole world
நம்மள தேடிப்புடிச்சு ரச்சித்தாரே எவ்வளவரும் நான் ரசிக்கப்படல
He sought after us and saved us and many have not saved it
அப்ப நாம ரசிக்கப்பட்டமை அது ஒரு பெரிய பாக்கிய
And we got saved and that is a great blessedness
ரசிக்கப்பட்ட சந்தங்கள் கோடிக்கனக்கானவேறு இருக்கும்பொழுது நம்மள அபிஷேகம் மண்ணாரே நம்ம இன்னும் பாக்கியவாங்க
When crowds and crowds of people were saved and but still the Lord appointed us and yet more we are blessed
அபிஷேகம்பெற்ற கிருஷ்டவர்கள் கூட்டம் ஆயிரக்கணக்கள் எச்சக்கணக்கள் இருக்கும்பொழுது நம்மை பரிசுதவாங்கள் ஓளிலுள்ள பரிசுதவாங்கள் சொதுந்தர்த்தில் கொண்டுவந்தாரே அப்ப நாம் இன்னும் அதேவிட பாக்கியவாங்க
And the manner of many unwanted people and thousands and lakhs of people are found in this world if the Lord don't answer the light of the saints of God and that it is more blessedness
இந்த சபைக்குள்ள வந்துருக்குறோம் பாருங்க இப்ப வருகில் காய்த்தபடுறோமே ஆனால் அதேவிட பாக்கியவாங்க
And we came to this church and we are getting ready for the rapture and yet we are more blessed
உண்மையாகவே வருகில் என்னைக்கு நம்ம போரமா அன்னைக்குதான் நம்ம பாக்கியவன்கள் என்பது நிருவிக்கப்படும்
Really, when we are taken up in the rapture on those days, it was we proud that we are blessed
முதலாவது நாம் பாக்கியவன்கள் என்பதை நாம் விசுவாசிக்கவேற்றோம்
First, we have to believe that we are blessed people
நாங்குடைய யோசிப்பாப்பை செல்ல நாத்திலோ கொந்து யோசிப்பாப்பை என்ன சம்பந்தமிலாமா நம்ம இதுக்குள்ள வந்து மடிட்டுமென
And sometimes I used to come for and think so and without anything, any relationship we have come and caught here
நமக்கும் CPMக்குப் பெண்டிகாஸ்டுக்கு ஏசு இதில்லான் சம்பந்தமிலாத ட்ராக்ல போன ஒரு ஆள் கொண்டு தேடி புடிச்சி கொண்டு எங்கோ காரோச்சாரே சார்லோ கார்ரான் சொன்னவை
And we are not related to this track in Pentecostal church that the Lord sought after us and made us to sit here
அந்தோடு நோக்கத்தில் எப்படி வச்சிருக்கார் பாருங்க
And see how the Lord kept us in his purpose
பாச்சர் பிரபாகர் அடிகடி சொல்லுவாரு
Pastor Prabha used to tell often
நாம்மட்டு ஏசு ஒப்புடிச்சிருந்தன்னா எப்பொமோ ஓடிப்பிருப்பேன் அவரு புடிச்சுகிட்டார் அதேவிட இதோரிக்கு நான் ஓடாமற்றேன்ம
If I have hold Jesus and I would have not left somewhere but Jesus had hold me, I never staying in him
என்ன எனக்கு வந்து ஊளித்துள்ள உந்த பிரச்னைகள் இல்ல நான் அவர் கையைப் புடிச்சிருந்தன்னா எப்போ நின்னுருப்பேன் ஐயா வேண்டவே வேண்டா விட்டுருன்னு நான் போய்ட்டுருப்பேன் ஆனா புடிச்சது யாரு? அவரு புடிச்சதாரே அவரு விடவே மடக்கறாரும்போது
The problems which I was facing in the ministry were so many and if I had held his hands, I would have left him but he held my hands so I was still at saving
அதேவிட தான் பைபில்ல சொல்லிருக்கு உனக்கு கொடுத்த அந்த நல்ல தேசத்துக்காக நீ என்ன செய்நோ? தேவனை ஸ்தோத்திரிக்க கடவாய்
So in the Bible say for the good land the Lord has given, you must praise him
நீ புசித்து கூடித்து மகிழ்ச்சியா இருக்கும்பொழுது அந்த நல்ல தேசத்துக்காக நீ என்ன செய்நோ? நன்றி செல்லத்தோம் ஆண்டவே இந்த பாக்கியம் கொடுத்தீங்களே அதுக்காக ஸ்தோத்திர
When you eat drink a bridge of this good land and you must offer praises and think giving thanks to the Lord for giving you good land
கத்தரை தேவமாக்குண்டுருக்கிற ஜனம் பாக்கியமுள்ள
And blessed is the people that made Lord as his womb
அப்ப நாம்தான் பாக்கியவாங்க
And we are the blessed people
எந்த சூழலிலும் நம் நிர்ப்பாக்கியமுள்ளவர்களாய் என்செய்க்குடாது பொய்றவே கூடாது
At any kind of situation and we should not go to the rich state
ஒருவெளிந்து உலகத்தில் நம்மக்கு ஒன்னுமே எட்டிருக்காது
And sometimes we do not have anything in this world
உலகத்தில் எவ்வளோ எளக்கரமோ பரலவுத்தில் எவ்வளோ வென்செய்து இங்க மைனஸ் ஆகுதுன்னா அங்க கூடுது இங்க பிளஸ் ஆகுதுன்னா அங்க மைனஸ் ஆகுது
Whatever we lose in this world and we become less in this heaven and whatever it is going to pass in this heaven and become a loss in this earth
நம்மாளங்கள் ரெண்டு சைட்லேமே பிளஸ் ஆகுந்தும் பாக்குறாங்க அதை எப்படி முடியும்?
And other people want to become and add in both places
அந்த ஐசுரியவன் அந்த தரத்தரன் விஷயத்திலே ஆப்ரகம் ஒரு வார்த்தை சொல்லுறாரு நீ பூமியிலே எல்லாவற்றையும் அனுபவித்தாய் இப்ப நீ கஷ்டப்படுத்துறாய் அவர் எல்லாவற்றையும் தீமையை அனுபவித்தான் அவர் என்ன செய்றான்? இன்னைக்கு நன்மை அனுபவிக்கறான் நீ நன்மை அனுபவிச்சே இப்ப தீமை அனுபவிக்குற
A rich man and a poor estate, Abraham has given confession that and you have done good things in your life, now you are thinking and you are experiencing evil and those days he was experiencing evil, now he experience good
அது நல்ல சாப்பிடறோங்க நல்ல ட்ரஸ் போட்டுருக்கோங்க நல்ல கார்ல போறோங்க பிளைட்ல போறோங்க நல்ல விசுவாசிகள் பரகாரங்கள் இருக்குறாங்க உங்களைப் பாத்துக்கிட்டு நீங்கலா என்செய்தீங்க ஆயோ போச்சே நமக்குலாம் பிடிக்கடிக்கிலே பரந்தா இப்படிலா பரந்துருக்கணோ அப்படிலா நீங்க யோசிக்கவேண்டா இப்படி பரந்தது நல்லது நான் எங்க போயிருவேன் எனக்கு என்ன இருக்கு பரலவுத்தில் ஒர இடா இருக்குங்கறோ நிச்சயத்தை நீங்கள் பெற்றுக்கொள்ளவேற்றோம்
And looking into the rich people though so go by car and flight and you should not have a desire about thing and you must have a hope and realization and believe that I will be caught up in the rapture
நீ பாக்கியவாங்க
You are blessed
எப்படி இவன் பாக்கியவாங்க மாறுறான்?
How he became blessed?
ஆதியாகமும் நாபத்தியூன்பது இருவதை பார்க்கும்பொழுது
When we look at the book of Genesis, chapter forty-nine, verse twenty
ஆசேருடைய ஆகாரம் கொளுமையாயிருக்கும் ராஜாக்குகளுக்கு வேண்டிய ருசி வர்கங்களை அவன் தருவான்
ஆசேருடைய ஆகாரம் கொளுமையாயிருக்கும்
Out of Asur, his bread shall be fat
கொளுமையாயிருக்குன்னா டைலி பிரியானி சாப்பிட்டதிலே நம்முடைய எஜிவியத்திலே கொளுமையான ஆகாரங்களுது உபரேசதைக்கான்பிக்க
And the royal thing is in our doctorate shows that we are having a flourish or prosperous doctrines
அவந்து ஆகார எப்படி இருக்கோ? அவந்து ஆகார எப்படி இருக்கோ? கொளுமையாயிருக்கும்
And how was bread, it shall be made fat
எவரே எவரே வாசிக்கும்பொழுது பாலை உண்ணத்தக்க ஒரு கூட்டம் இருக்கிறது பலமான ஆகாரத்தைப் புசிக்குக்குடி இன்னொரு கூட்டம் இருக்கிற
And when we look at the book of Hebrews and there are the group of people and those who take milk and those who take another sound food
வாசிங்க
இது ரைனா மதியா பாரிமோன்றா வசனம் பாலொங்கிரவன் குழந்தையா இருக்கிறபடினாலே மீதின் வசனத்தில் பழக்கமிலாதவனா இருக்கிற பலமான ஆகாரமானது நன்மை தீமை இன்னுதென்று பைச்சினால் பகுத்தரியத்தக்கதாக மூய்த்தி செய்யும் யானேங்கிருங்களை உடையவங்களாகிய பூரண வயதுல்லவுள்ளிக்கே தகும்
பலமான ஆகார
A strong bit
நீ பாருங்க உலகத்தில் எல்லாரும் நல்ல அளக சாப்பிட்டு சந்தோஷமா இருக்கும்பொழுது யோவன் சானக்கு என்ன சாப்பிட்டா? ஹ? பெட்டிகள் என்ன நீங்க விட்டியில் பரந்துட்டுருக்கைது எப்படி பிள்ச் சாப்பிட்டுதுன்னா எவ்வளை? இப்ப இப்பது ஓன்ன அந்த செடிகள் நீங்க தவிகிட்டுருக்காது அதை வெட்டிக்கிட்டா அது சாப்பிட்டுதுன்னா? இல்ல, அது ஒரு கெலங்கு
And locust is like an N
அந்த கெலங்கு புசித்தா அது அவனுடைய ஆகார
And he was consuming the T M and that was his food
அது என்ன சாப்பிட்டா?
And then what he did eat?
காட்டுதேன் அது என்ன கான்பிக்கிறது? தேனிலும் தெளி தேனிலும் மதுரம் வசனம்
And that is wild honey which is tasted more than honey but is a word of God
ஏசு சின்னபிள்ளை இருக்கும்பொழுது என்ன சாப்பிட்டாரு?
And when Jesus was young, what did he eat?
மத்தை மூன்றுல நீங்க பாக்குறீங்க யோவன் சானக்கு என்ன சாப்பிட்டாரு? வாசிங்க மூன்று அவன் வெட்டிக்கிளியும் காட்டுதேனும்?
நான்கா வசனம் மத்தை மூன்றா மதிகார நான்கா வசனம் இந்த யோவன் ஒட்டகமையிருடையுதறித்து தன்னாறையில் வார்க்கச்சி கட்டிக்கொண்டுருந்தா வெட்டுக்கிளியும் காட்டுதேனும் அவனுக்கு ஆகாரமாயிருந்தது
இங்கிலீஸ் எப்படி இருக்குது கொஞ்சம் பாருங்க இங்கிலீஸ்
And his meat was locust and wild honey
அப்படின்னு என்னது? அது ஒரு கெலங்கு
And it is a kind of N or potato
சட்டி ஏசு சின்னபிள்ளை என்ன சாப்பிட்டாரு? சொல்ல
What Jesus ate in his young age?
என்ன? ஹ? என்னது? வெண்ணையும் தேனும் சாப்பிட்டாரா அவங்க பாத்துச்செந்துகாங்க பைபில்ல வசனத்துதான் சொல்லிருக்காங்க ஏசாயத்திற்கு திருஷ்ணப் புஸ்தகோ ஒன்பதா மதிகார வாசிங்
ஏழா மதிகார பதினேயா வசனம்
சரி தப் ஏழு
பதினேயா
பதினேயா
தீமையை வெறுத்து நன்மை தெரிந்துகொள்ள அறியும் வயது மட்டும் அவர் வெண்ணையையும் தேனையையும் சாப்பிடுவார்
எதைச் சாப்பிடுவாரு? நன்மை தீமை தெளிவான அறியும் வருகிறவருக்கு அவர் எதைச் சாப்பிடுவாரு? வெண்ணையையும் தேனையையும் சாப்பிடுவார்
Until he get good knowledge of the evil and good and he consume butter and honey
அது என்ன வெண்ணை?
And what does that butter?
பால் அல்ல, பால் வந்து வசனோ இது அடுத்த ஸ்டெப்புக்கு போயியு, அடுத்த ஸ்டெப்புக்கு வந்துருக்கு என்னது? உபரேச
And milk is a word of God, it is not, we came to the next step and it is a doctrine
குழந்தைகளுக்கு எதைக் கொடுப்பாங்க? பால் கொடுப்பாங்க
And for the child they give milk
வளந்த பிள்ளைகளுக்கு பலமான ஆகாரம் கொடுப்பாங்க
For the grown-up child and they give the strong meats
ஏசுக்கு பால் கொடுத்தாங்க ஒரு டைம் அது அறிக்கடுத்த ஸ்டெப்புக்கு எங்க வந்தாரு? வெண்ணைக்கு வந்துட்டாரு
And Jesus was given milk at one stage and next stage he came to eat his butter
பால் வர்வொச்சி தைராக்கி தரையை தைர கடஞ்சி எது வரோ? வெண்ணை வரோ
And with milk, milk becomes curd and when it is curd, it becomes butter
வேத வாக்கியங்களை சும்மா படிச்சால் அது ஆறாயின்று பாக்கணும் அப்ப வெண்ணை நித்தி ஜீவன் கிடைக்கும்
Just not only reading the scripture, we have to meditate and we have to examine and then it becomes eternal life
ஆசேருடைய ஆகாரம் எப்படி இருக்கோ? கொளுமையானது
The bread of Asher would be flat
நம்ம வந்து சும்மா சுவிசேஷம் கேட்டுக்கிட்டுருக்குறது கூடாது
It is not only just we are hearing the doctrine of Gospel
சுவிசேஷம் வந்து ஸ்டார்டிங் ஸ்டேஜ்
And Gospel is the initial state
பூரணம் வந்தது உபரேச
And perfection is a doctrine
தேவ பக்திக்கேயேற்ற உபரேச
And it is a doctrine concerned to the God of God
கிருஷ்டுவின் உபரேச
And it is the doctrine of Christ
கிருஷ்டுவின் உபரேசத்தை உடையவன் இல்ல, கிருஷ்டுவின் உபரேசம் இல்லாதவன், கிருஷ்டுவனுடையவன் அல்ல
And he do not have the doctrine of Christ, belong not to Christ
என்ன பெண்டிகாஸ்டுகாரங்க மத்தங்களோட மிங்கிலாகும் மடக்கறாங்கன்னு ஒரு கூஸ்டிட
And there was a question why the people of Pentecost are not mingling with others?
ஆரம்பகாலங்கள் மிங்கிலாய்டுருந்தோ
In the initial state and we were mingling with them
அப்ப அப்ப செமினர் வைப்பாங்க
And we used to conduct seminars
எல்லா பஷ்டஸ் அடென்மன்வாங்க
All the pastors will attend the seminar
இப்ப இந்திப்பண்ட பஷ்டஸ் எல்லாம் செய்ற மாறி நம்மாளங்களும் பையல் அடென்மன்வாங்க
And independent pastors are gathering and we people also will gather there
ஒரு காலத்தில் மதிரையில் மீட்டிங் வைக்கும்பொழுது ஆஸ்பான் மீட்டிங்கள் நம்ம மீட்டிங்களிலா ஆஸ்பான் பேசுறார்
And Asman went to the Atmatru meeting and he was speaking in that meeting
ஆஸ்பான்னா ஒரு பாரின் பிரேச்சர் நீங்கள் எல்லாம் கெல்விப்பட்டுருப்பீங்க நம்ம மீட்டிங்கள் அவரு பேசுறார், நம்ம பஷ்டஸ்ல கொந்துருக்காங்க, அவரும் பேசுறார் நம்மாளங்களும் ஹீலிங் பண்றாங்க, அவரும் ஹீலிங் பண்றாங்க அது ஒரு கால
You could have heard about Pastor Asman and he was a famous preacher in the Independent Church and he was preaching in our church and the people also were preaching
இப்ப அடிகடி செமினர் வச்சி வசனங்கள பேசுவாங்க
Often they used to conduct seminars and speak the word of God
பிரதர் பாக்கியராஜினு ஒர்த்தர் இருந்தார்
And there was a brother called Bakiraj
அவரு கொஞ்சம் பைபில்ல ஸ்காலர் நம்ம இதில
And he was a scholar in Bible in our congregation
இவங்க பதினெட்டா வசன பேசினா இவருக்கு சான்ஸ் கொடுத்தவனே பத்தம்போலா வசன புரிப்பாரு
And when he was speaking about eighteenth verse and he will take a hold of nineteenth verse
உபரேசத்தில் அவங்களை ஒன்னுமிலாமாக்குடுவார்
And through the doctrine and he will make them known
ஒரு நாலு மீட்டிங் அடென்மன்வானே அவங்க பாத்தாங்க இனிமை CPM கரை என்செய்க்குடாது எப்போ வந்தாலும் எடக்கமடக்கான வசனத்தைச் சொல்லி நம்மள வந்து நிச்சயிராங்க டம்மி பண்றான் சொல்லி இனிமை வாண்டானாங்க அதோடு இவங்க ஓரிங்கிட்டா அத்தனையில் இருந்து நம் வேறு வாட்டிங் ஜீவிதுக்கு வந்து விட்டோம்
Then they have given a strong meat and they departed him because and they are making confusion trouble and they thought it out of us and we have gotten through the doctrine of life of separation
நீ புசித்து கூடித்து உபரேசத்திலே கொளுமையானவனாய் மாறு
You must become eat and drink and become so flourish in the doctrine
நீங்க புசித்து கூடித்து இல்லாதவர்கள் என்ன செய்ங்க? என்ன செய்ங்க? வாசிங்க நீங்க புசிச்சு கூடிச்சிட்டு விட்டற்குடாது அந்த உபரேசத்தை மத்தங்கள் என்செய்ங்க அனுப்புங்க
Eat and drink and send the doctrine to others and give to them
நீகேமியை எட்டா மதிகார பத்தா வசனம் பின்னும் அவன் அவர்களை நோக்கி நீங்கள் போய் கொளுமையானதைப் புசித்து மதுரமானதைக் கொடித்து ஒன்சு இலாதவர்களுக்கு பங்குகளை அனுப்புங்க
கொளுமையானதைப் புசித்து மதுரமானதைக் கொடித்து அதை நான் கொளுமையானதைப் புசித்து உபரேசத்தைப் புசித்து மதுரமான வசனத்தை நீ கொடித்து நீ என்ன செய்ய மற்றவனுக்கு இல்லாதவனுக்குக் கொடு உபரேசத்தைச் சொல்ல
Eat and fat and drink the sweet, this mean that you have to take the word of God and doctrine and give it to others that do not have
அதேவிட நம்ம மத்தங்களோ பாத்தவன் நம்மள பாத்தவன் அவங்க வெடிட்டுப் போறாங்க நம்ம இலுத்துக்குதே போறோம்
So those who come and we are not calling them and they go behind
பரலவுத்தில் போய் என்ன ஆக போதுன் தெரில் இல்ல, தனித்தனி வீடி விசிர்வாங்களான்னு தெரில்
I do know what is going to happen in the heaven, we are going to have is different streets
ஒன்னு யோவன்ல பார்க்கும்பொழுது ரெண்டு யோவன்ல பார்க்கும்பொழுது
When we look onto second John
இந்த உபரேசத்தை ஒர்த்த ஏற்றுக்கிடாதா அவனுக்கு விஷ்குடப்பண்ணாதா அவினு பைபில்சொல்ல
And the Bible say when one is not accepting this doctrine and you should not even accept them
யோவன் ரெண்டு யோவன் ஒன்பது பத்து பதினொன்னு
கிருஷ்டுவின் உபரேசத்திலே நிலைத்திராமல் மீரி நடக்கிற எவனும் தேவனை உடையவனல்ல கிருஷ்டுவின் உபரேசத்தில் நிலைத்திருக்கிறவனோ பிதாவையும் குமார்நேயும் உடையவன் ஒருவன் உங்களுடைத்தில் வந்து இந்த உபரேசத்தைக் கொண்டு வராமலிருந்தா அவனை உங்கள் வீட்டிலே ஏற்றுக்கொள்ளாமலும் அவனுக்கு வாழ்த்தத் சொல்லாமலுமிருங்கள் அவனுக்கு வாழ்த்தத் சொல்லுகிறவன் அவனுடைய தூத்கிரிகளுக்கும் பங்குள்ளவனாயிருக்கிற
இதிலாக நம்ம ஓரிங்கி கொஞ்சம் அமைதியா போகிட்டுருக்கோ
So we are laying aside and we are keeping silent
கிருஷ்டுவின் உபரேச
And the doctrine of Christ
கிருஷ்டுவின் உபரேச இல்லைனாங்க பிதாவையும் குமார்நேயும் இல்லாதவன்
If there is no doctrine of Christ and he who will know father and son
உபாகமும் முப்பத்திமூனு இருவத்தினால் பார்க்கும்பொழுது
When we look into Deutonomy chapter thirty-three, verse twenty-four
அங்கே ஆசேர் பாக்கியவன் என்று சொல்லப்பட்டுருக்க
It is mentioned Asur is a blessed
ஆசேரிக் குறித்து ஆசேர் புத்திர பாக்கியமுடையவனா தன் சகோதரருக்குப் பிரியமாயிருந்து தன் காலை எண்ணையிலே தோய்ப்பான்
இங்கே ஆசேரிக் குறித்து சொல்லிருக்குற புத்திர பாக்கியமுடையவனாயிருப்பான்
Asur be the exception of his children
தன் சகோதரருக்குப் பிரியமாயிருப்பான்
He is acceptable to his brethren
தன் காலை எண்ணையிலே தோய்ப்பான்
And he will dip his foot in oil
அது அதே கான்பிக்கிறது
What does it show?
ஆவிக்குறிய வாள்கீல வந்துட்டு பிறகு சகோதர நேகம் முக்கியமான
After coming to the fellowship of the spiritual life and we must have the brotherlihood
கண்ட சகோதரருக்கு அந்புகுறாதவன் கானாத தேவனுடைத்தில் எப்படி அந்புகுறுவான்?
And he who does not see having love with his brother who see and how he have the love upon brother who do not see
தன் சகோதரனைப் பகைக்கிற எவனும் மன்னிஷ கொலைபாதக
And he who hated his brother is a murderer
அவர் பாக்கியவன் சொன்னா சகோதரரோடு ஐக்கியமகருளா
When we say he is blessed and he should have the fellowship or unity with his brother
தன் காலை எண்ணையிலே தோய்ப்பான்
He dipped his the foot on oil
இது அவனுடைய ஆசிர்வாதமான ஒரு ஆவிக்குறிய வாள்கீலைக்கான்பிக்க
And this is a blessed spiritual life
யோபுக்கு அப்படி ஒரு வாள்கீல் இருந்தது
And Job had such a life
யோபு ஒரு காலத்தில் வசதியா இருக்கும்பொழுது தன் காலை எதை காலை எவிலுள்ள கலுவுனா செலுங்க யோபு வசதியா இருக்கும்பொழுது தன் கால்களை எதில் கலுவினா நெயிலுள்ள கலுவுனான ஜோபில எப்படிலா இருந்துருக்காங்க பாரு
And see how Job was rich and he was dipping his foot with ghee
யோபு இருவத்தியூன்பது ஆர
என் பாதங்களை நான் நெய்யினால் கலுவினேன்
என் பாதங்களை எதிலே கலுவுனா நெயிலுள்ள கலுவுனா கிற
I washed my steps with butter
அப்படின்னு என்ன அர்த்தம்?
What does it mean?
உபரேசத்திலே உன் கால்கள் கலுவப்படக
And your foot must be washed by the doctrine
உன் கால்கள் உபரேச அதது வெண்ணையிலிருந்து அடுத்த ஸ்டெப்புதா இது செலுங்க வெண்ணையிலிருந்து அடுத்த ஸ்டெப்புதா நெய்
And the next step was butter is ghee
அப்ப நீ இன்னும் உபரேசத்திலே இன்னும் நீ டெப்துக்குள்ள போ
And still you have to go deep in the doctrine And still you have to go deep in the doctrine.
Kristaveen obadesa onne kristuvay pola maathanu.
The doctrine of Christ was changed here like Christ.
Gobi Jati Palayathila oru prasang.
At Gobi Jati Palayam, there was a preaching.
Ah, na oru subject pesarintu kuruthite.
And I have given a topic to speak about a subject.
Goburangal.
It was towers.
RSS avala oru ennimita.
All the RSS people rose up.
Engalikka goburangalirka.
And we have towers.
Enga goburangala thakibesatai vaarran cholthu.
And he who come here to attack and speak about our towers.
Naamboi faytamangirukkunna tharana brother poli stationla ukandhirukkari.
And when he was looking after this fake home and brother was sitting in a police station.
Eba engala faytum keta na stationla ukandhirinna.
I asked where is fake home and he said so I was standing in station how you come.
Ennan keta, goburangal, abidiniradu, indu varthai.
I asked reason, the meaning for the term for the towers as a meaning of the skin to wear.
Photograp flaxel alla goburangaladu alikisol.
In all the flexible, I asked you to erase the term as goburangal.
Aneki newspaperla fulla potta.
On the day newspaper, it was published.
Eppriyana magu publishedi aikittai varadu.
And now it become publicity to us.
Onne, enna goburangalapatti pesaparara.
I asked whatever he is going to speak.
Adavandhu eluthu puruvuma kodukum.
In little term they have to give us.
Thiripu oru biblelu koduthu, naam pesara bannandu goburangaliyin chingio. Notpanikuruthu, avabiblelu yinkoburavaka chariintu vitta.
I gave the Bible and all the twelve points of towers I am going to speak and they said so, there are towers even in the Bible and the chapters.
Madamattatha patti pesakudada.
And you should not speak about the conversion of this religion.
Ah, bangaramana meetingadu, pasantu pakka.
And it was a great meeting near pastor.
Pesara thedal vandhu periyar thedal.
And the meeting hall is near the periar meeting hall.
Na stagela nikram, periyaridhal nikirare.
I was standing in the stage and periar was standing near me.
Periar chela enga nikidu.
And the statue of periar is standing.
Ah, gatela poliis nikidu, RSS fulla nikram, enna pesaparav.
Near the gate and police people and all the RSS people are standing.
Allam pesimudichu varumbadhu.
When all was spoken, I came.
First day mudiyabodhu.
And the end of the first day meeting.
Ah, na chonnay, sindikkamarupavamindu sollugirar periyar, sindikkamarupavam muttal, abidina periyar solradu.
And those who did fail to thought and he is a fool said by periyar.
Na chonnay kadavul illa indru sindikkamarupavam muttal.
I said so those who are not thinking about God and he is a fool.
Periar team amayidhiyata, onudurin pesavaila.
And the periar team, they kept silent, they could not speak.
Adaisilachonnay, madamattu omukhyam alla, oruvarun kristuvanai marave vandam.
And at last.
Kristuvay pola mariinal podu unnu pesne.
At last I said so there is no need of conversion of religion, no need to change the religion and only if you turn into a Christian.
Kristuvanamaraada.
And no one need to become a Christian.
Avarun kristuvay maranu.
But everyone must become a Christ.
Pushtha.
And.
Avan catchpunttha.
And there he quotes the point.
Chuti chuti matthathukavanditthara, matthamnusolitthara, marunusolitthara, avaravadane inquiry kupindha.
At last he said so that he was speaking about conversion and we must call him for inquiry.
Kalile patumani kvarusundu.
And ten o'clock we came there.
Na chonnay alla varthe kexol, ananglu CD eduthukon, naavandolra, eduthu portu parun, karashila poiita.
At last he was leaving the matter and went.
Edukishonna.
Why are you saying this?
Indha obadesa onne epri maato, ippooru nam devan depligala arukram, ini ividamai, ini evidamai irupomindraariyom, anaalum, avar velipodu modhu, avarikopai irupom.
And we do not know how we are and we are changing and we are disappearing, we do not know how we will be transformed.
Irindavadaaka.
Secondly.
Aval banuvelin kumarathi.
And she was the daughter of Anuval.
Abidina enna artho.
What does it mean?
Banuvelnayare.
Who is that Anuval?
Adadu, chala karigallam marubi marubi varu.
And some kind of things will become in different.
Alayerpatla miriam daam, puriyarpadla mariyal.
And Miriam in Old Testament is made in New Testament.
Alayerpatla miriamna irukliya.
Old Testament, it was mentioned Miriam.
Chennaila vandhu Hamilton Bridge no nirunduchi.
And at Chennai, there was a Hamilton Bridge.
Adu iluthu iluthu, namchennayalgalam pesia ambattan varaavadiyam mariichi.
And when the Chennai people, when they are talking language, when they speak, and it become ambattan.
Ambattan varaavadi na enna thirimilla, shavupandrava, mudivatravam, Hamilton mari, epri mariichi, ambattan varaavadiyam mariichi.
And Hamilton was changed, it was turned into a different.
Alubala.
Likewise.
Miriam, alayer puriyarpadla mariyal.
And Old Testament in Miriam, in New Testament, she is called as Miriam.
Alayerpatla Beniel, puriyarpadla Banuvel.
And Beniel at the New Testament, Banuvel, a New Testament.
Adiyavamutlaninga pathingana.
When we look into Genesis.
32, 30.
At thirty-two ten.
Appadhi aakupu naan.
32, 30.
Thirty-two thirty.
Appadhi aakupu naan devane mugamugamai kandeen, uyithappi pedethen indusolli, andhasthalathukku Beniel indupari tann.
Devane mugamugamai kandeen, abidina, adukku Beniel indupari tann, abidina enna artho, Beniel induchonnal devan edayam mugam, indraatho.
I have seen God face to face, when they say Beniel, it is, I am looking up to see him face to face or God's face.
Idu iluthu iluthu, puriyarpadla oru modhu, epri mariichi, stylea, Banuvel, ala namalangala, paanu madhi paanu, abidla peruvikrani.
And dragging these level, become a fanuel at a new testament.
Paadi varisheelaan peruvichirikani.
And Shem, they have your name as Sheila.
Abidina, paadi sistersu Sheilaan vichiravanga, keta, Pauloda maneviinu, Paulukku eda maneviye.
And they used to tell it as a wife of Saint Paul and Paul do not have any for wife.
Paul Sheila vai kuttikunduponanna, oru sister kuttipitan arthama, appidi alla, Sheila agaradu ambla payam per.
And Sheila, it is a name of a male.
Abidina, avde sariyana per, English lennerge, Sheila agaradu, enna de, Silas.
Silas in English.
Idu innorathila biblella varadu, Silvanu.
In other name, it is called as Silvanus.
Silvanu vai kuttikundu, ividi sister aikiravanga, thadri biblelu yamadichangipodru, Silvanu chodhi.
So they have termed the English term as a Silvanus in Bible.
Malayathila Paulosum, Seilosum, abidina, hmm. Um, Chennaila oru paya, oru vedla twins parunaga, adukku pasvesli vichirukkar, Paulos, Seilos.
At Chennai, the twins were there.
Paulos, Paulos, Silos.
And pastor gave a name as Paulos and Silas.
Parala, Silas uleethalirka.
And Silas, he was in ministry now.
Na edukitha solradu na.
Why I say this?
Beniel tha epri mari varadu. Ah, na mugamugamai devane kandeen.
And Beniel means I have seen God face to face.
Devanin mugathain naan parthain.
I have seen the face of God.
Anaal, andharathukku Beniel nu peruvich.
So the name was called as Beniel.
Idha appamekko nyachayidchi.
At that time itself, it was changed a little.
Epame mararamchichi.
When it was changed.
Ah, appame Beniel, Benuvela mariichi, puriyarpadla oru modhu, Banuvela mariichi.
And Benuvel, it becomes Benuvel, at New Testament, it becomes Fanuel.
Adu biblelu ninga pakala, adiyavamutlaney parkala.
And we can read in Genesis.
Avan Benuvelukku vandhan.
And he came to Benuvel.
Ah, idakuruthu ningal, niyayadiyabodigal na nigna. Niyayadiyabodigala padchigana, Benuvelin goburavnu oru goburavka.
And there was a tower called Tower of Benuvel.
Abidina enna artho, etta madigaram, padiniala vasanu, niyayadiyabodigal, ette, padiniala, idu da.
Eight seventeen of judges.
Apri, appame Beniel epri mariichi parunga. Ah.
Pindu avan seyavavi silan.
Ette, padiniala.
Benuvelin kobratte edithu.
Benuvelin goburam.
And the Tower of Benuvel.
Idu puriyarpadla oru modhu, enna che, pe bava ichi, Banuvela mai mariichi, ippar namu vedla, allar go, monu banu irukkanga, andha banu, indha banu, allabano irukka.
In the New Testament, it becomes Fanuel.
Abidina enna artho, devanidhiyam mugam.
The meaning is a face of God.
Indha Annaaludhiya, appa, elaa, avga per vandhu, Benuvel.
And father of Anna is called as a fanuel.
Aval Banuvelin kumarathi.
And she was the daughter of Anuval.
Devan edayam mugathai parkum valkai.
And having the light to see you because the face of God.
Eduganu.
You must become a blessing.
Neerindavu devan de mugathai parkupudiyavanai irukka.
Second, you must be the one to see or behold the face of God.
Sangyadakaran solradu, omade mugathai motte, annakum marachidadiyaa.
And Shamsa say hide not your face from me.
Omade mugathai annakukkattunga.
Show your face to me.
Andore de mugathaparkara oru valkiyyittha, namavandhitthirukkun.
And we are living a life to face him.
Oru edathila Moses solradu, andore, namomade mahimeyapakunna.
At one place and he said so Moses, I want to behold your glory.
Aba andore solradu, neengu oru edathila vandhinillu, na unakum mahimeyakattara.
And God said unto him, you stand in the place where I can show you glory.
En mugathani, kanaamatai.
But you will not see my face.
Atramu 33.
Irudha vasanu.
Ah.
Ni en mugathai kanaamatai.
Ni en mugathai kanaamatai, ana engi even solradu, na devan de mugathapattengara.
And Heathen said so, you will not see my face, but here he say, I have seen the face of God.
Oru nokka me, puriyarpadu sabayinu nokka me, devan de mugathapakaradu.
Our purpose and the purpose of the New Testament Church is to face, they see the face of God.
Indha olakathila ulyakaran, ellati vuddathukka karunenna, viswasi ellati vuddittu vandhu karunenna, orayakarun, yara bagunna. Yara bagunna, Esuvin mugathapakunna.
The reason for forcing everything in this world of the faithful servants of God believers is to see the face of Jesus.
And orayee vanjayaladha poyitthirukkum.
And we are going with the same design.
Yobu solradu, naan avare partpay.
I will behold him.
Anniyakangalai, sondakankalal, naan avare kanbe.
Not my strange eyes, but my own eyes, I will see him.
24, enna solugiradu.
And what revelation, chapter twenty-two is.
Avar de ulyakarar, angie pooy, avar de, Tamil bible tapu, Tamil de bible choliirukku, samugathai darisi paru, samugathan angi darisi chidukka man, anga boy, English lennerge.
And they see.
Darisi paru.
And they shall see his face.
Vasinke, Tamil enga, English enga.
Velipanthal irudhu trendu naangu, avar de ulyakarar, avare seyavithu.
Ah, ninga vasinke, Tamil vasinke, English vasinke.
Avar de samugathai darisi paru.
Samugathai darisi parukkun, enga, Tamil de choliirukku, ah.
And they shall see his face and his life shall be.
Mugathaparparu.
And they shall see his face.
Anga boy parlautu, be mugathapakal, thiripi, anga boy pakuporu.
And if we do not behold them there and there, we will see his face.
Ah, ni devan edayapullayanaal, ni baakiyavan, mudalavuyithalakku pangullavan baakiyavan, avan kristaveen mugathai parpan, pidavin mugathai parpan.
If you are a child of God, you are blessed and he will behold the face of Jesus and his father and they are blessed.
Manushadal, manushari looruvaram, kandiradavaram, kanaakoodadavarama, ye ha chakraadibodiye, nam parkapoguram.
And we are going to look unto the Godfather and who was not beholded by the men and other people of men.
Indha kudumbutla vandha, indha kothrathla vandavalda, Annaal.
And he who come in this tribe is Anna.
Annaal chonnakirubai pettavam, ilavatal dayavu pettavamna artho.
Anna means one who got favor or grace.
Devan de pillegal, indhanakkala kirubai dayavu pettavala irukka.
And the child of God must receive the kindness or favor or grace from God.
Ipa dayavu irukkunna, epri kanbikiradu.
How we can find that they are having kindness.
Ellaame namukku favoraranda dayavu irukkunna arthama.
If everything is favorable to us, is that they will receive.
Adu oruvidutthila correctu.
At what point is correct?
Dayavu kradu, English lennerga choliirukku, favor na choliirukku.
And favor then English mentioned.
Devanathilundhu dayavu pettavunde, sariyana adayala enna.
What is the real symbol or sign for receiving favor from God?
Enakka devadayavu karachirukka, abidina enna artho.
And what does it mean that I have got the kindness from God?
Alukku palavilakkungalirukku.
And there are many explanations behind it.
Avar de dayavu. Ah, needyae valvu.
And the long life is his favor.
Avar de dayavanala, oru selvamai, valindha.
And they will live in danger because of a blessing.
Devan de dayavula uladu.
And these are the kinds of favor.
Anuvalana devadayavula namukku kadekara, enna, onne gunappudu, bodi devadayavunenjiitthi arukka, yeveekittai arukka.
And the real favor of God will make you to come in the most perfect way.
Romar.
Irindha madigara naangka vasanu.
Ah.
Alazh devadayavu, ni gunappudumbadi, onne yeveekaradendu ariyam.
Devadayavu irukkunna chonnna, onne, aavyanor vadaamata, onde, urutikittai darparu.
And if you have the favor of God and the spirit of God will not leave you.
Ipa chala pillengal, ninga parunga, ey, okara, elambe, malangalpode, kanna modu, anga pakara, anga va, abidin choliitthi, na unkku yurichal payikutu, onnamari.
And some will be asked to stay on knees, to close your eyes blind, and they will be getting traumatized or irritated.
Karunenna, avulukku taangapillingal alla arukkunna, andha orayee kannaadhaladhalam prupanga, avan de swadinathapatti, avukku pesavamata, adu bole.
And likewise, the devil does speak about the freedom and their intention is that they have to come and grow in a perfect way.
Ungalukku, enakkum, devadayavu irukkunna chonnna, ni alla sandoshama, alla selvathakuduthu, unya vaasidukirudum maatharam alla, andha devadayavu irukkunde, sariyana adayala, onne gunappudumbadi, enjigittai arukka, onne sariputtridhukke, unakkulla poradikittai arukka, yeveekundai arukka.
And the real intention of the favor of God will make you or urge you to come out good, being repented or come in a perfect way.
Dayavu dayavu irukkunna chonnna, orutam unavu arupan artho.
When you hear the favor of God and you will have that realization.
Oru chinnatappuntakuda, avanal, samaanama irukkumidiyadu.
And even if you come with a small mistake and they cannot live in peace.
Oranay malangal potruva.
Immediately they will stand on knees.
Oranay talthitruva.
And they will humble them.
Oranay arikeyedruva.
And he will confess.
Oranay phonea portu pesirua.
And he will call and speak.
Oranay compromise saiduva.
Immediately they will compromise.
Dayavu dayavu lenna, irudhen kadinamaidu.
If they do not have the favor of God and they haunt them.
Alala tha israeli janganla kurithum, paruvana kurithun, kattar pesumbadhu, evan mail kadinama irukka, chithama irukkuna, avan mail kadinama irukkuna, enna paruvana patti solitthi, devajanganu vichinar, evan mail dayavu irukka, rumburu, na avunke, tan kirubaya irukka.
And looking unto Pharaoh, the people of Israel, the Lord said so unto Pharaoh, and he who was hardened, I will harden unto him, and this was favor, I will be favor unto them.
Puriyarpadla kirubai pettavam, namukku alla arukkunna thiriyay, yare? Mariyalapati, ku, du, devadu, enna chonnna, kirubai pettavale, ni valke.
An angel was said about Mary and those who get grace, be said the prophet.
Apo puriyarpadu valkiye, dayavu kirubai namukku thav.
And in the New Testament life and we are in need of the grace and favor.
Avala patti bible choliikiradu.
And the Bible said about her.
Aval aserudhiyakothrathal.
And she belonged to the tribe of Israel.
Banuvelin kumarathi.
And she was the daughter of Anuval.
Annaal ennum tirkadarisi.
And she was a prophetous, Anna.
Abishyakam bettavangal, allar me tirkadarisi.
All the anointed ones were called as prophets.
Alala tha kanda kaladhi, ninga pesakudada cholradu.
So I used to tell you should not have any vain conversation.
Vartegalat cheli va pesunna, avasimilada, vartele, vongu vaile, varakuda, abishyakam bettani, maranamun, jivunun, engaruke, onavilak.
And life and death is found in your tank and so you should not utter any unnecessary words.
Ah, alala tha, ni abishyakam bettavam, vartey control panu.
You have to control your words that you are anointed.
Pressing enna solradu.
For the solemnancy.
Pressing enna solradu. Pressing ilene solabadrakadu.
And what is mentioned in the book of Ecclesiastes.
Deva samugathil, unvartegal, surukkama irupada.
And let your words be contained in the words presence of God.
Alala tha, na saachi kila, adhiguma solabadrakala.
So we are not giving more time for uttering testimony.
Vaadukken, indusikittu, devi viswathukka, maari, enatiya solitthi arupani.
And they must speak something contrary to that dying healing.
Maadukutti pottichu, ida saachiya.
And how have given anyone, it is a testimony.
Saachi vandhu remba gavana markunna.
And testimony must be very careful.
Un, ni deva samugathil, nirukumbadhu, unvartegal epri irupada, surukkama irupada.
When you are the presence of God, your words and tongues will thus be shortened.
Oru chala la, saachi solimudichu, onne priyamana, oru leentra, tapal.
And.
Eta prasangas start pantrana artho.
And when some will utter a testimony and they used to cause some believer.
Bangalore oral saachi chunnadu.
And Bangalore, one person testified.
Pasasampal pinnalakka dandara.
First a sample sitting at behind.
Saachi muljunchi.
Testimony was over.
Mudiyam badhu, enadu ya saachi, ketta priyamana, oru leenara, tapun chatte, putchilutthara.
At the end of the testimony, he said so, and believer and he was catching his shirt.
Onne saachi channa solasonnay.
I told to tell you testimony.
Adukku priyamana, oru, adu solradu, na jippa, pattinga arukka, na, ni enna solradu?
I am, I am in uniform to tell believer and why you want to tell these words?
Ni solakudada.
You should not sing.
Va saachi solitthi, ni ukandhrana, adukku paru, priyamana, oru, abidin, ni prasangmanana, anga irukkavala, onevada, tapalala, alla ukandhruppa.
Tell your testimony, you must sit and you should not continue any other words and many topics, people were sitting in that meeting.
Anga vandhu namukku thisolakudada.
And you should not give acknowledge to them.
Oru edathila, oramma saachi solitthi, yam paya, pudi, pudi, nishin, naasanna, yesu cholluma, vongu payanakalada, okkarintha.
At one place and she was testing her son and told, do you tell about Jesus and don't speak any other words?
Adu paru, naamukku remba tu, tu, yamani, eni, pathala, tippidikramariyapi.
And when I look unto him and she was not getting fired.
Adu paru, appavandhal, tuunukku, neera, anga boy ukandhruppa, indhaal, mojili, muriukkudada, enna.
Whenever she comes and you should sit behind the pillar, not to look my face.
Naasonnay, devan de samugathila, yar priyavare, onakku devan eda nanmasinchara, sol, adu viddu, viddu, yam paya, abidi, padichita, ibidi, padichita, adalala, idu solradu, na anga sabayavichitthirukka.
I told you, you are a great one from the medicine, you have to tell about him and you should not tell about son and you should not praise him.
Adalala, ninga, appa, pathingana, tuunukku, pinnalaboy, orinjiko.
And from there, whenever she comes and she will sit behind the pillar.
Karashila, avan payanu kalyanach.
At last, her son was got married.
Chief pastor vandupanna.
And chief pastor conducted marriage.
Karashila, bata, avar ragasya kudiakarapaya.
At last, and he was a secret drunk.
Nekidai vesularka.
Now he was in divorce, stayed.
Chief pastor, yanda, kalyanathukuponun, bangaramana, manada.
And chief pastor who awixed his spirit and wife got married with him.
Puri, puri, aralala tha, enakka thirimilla, aralala tha, na ukkar, oru varthla ukkar.
I know about a sense, so I said so, you must sit in a corner.
Vartegal surukkama.
And let your words be contained.
Ni oru tirkadarisi.
You are a prophet.
Abishyakam, enneki, padchitiya, aneki, ni yare? Ulyakaraviswasi, ninga alla yare? Tirkadarisi.
When you are anointed, a servant of God or believer, you are a prophet.
Ninga biblela padchiparunga, Avraham, yendha edathil, en billigale, naan ungal mathilirukkunna, tirkadasnave, cholala, ana bible cholikiradu, andore soldar, avan oru tirkadarisi.
And when you read in Bible and you will read about Abraham and he was a prophet.
Enga adirka? Chellaga. Jeremiah, Ezekiel, Joy, alla vadhusiya, padikiringala, biblela, tirkadasna, bustanga, Avraham, ninga adirka buku?
And is there any book called the prophetical book of Abraham, we are reading about Shereemah and Ezekiel and Jehovah.
Oru edathila, kuda Avraham tirkason cholala, ana biblela, andore soldar, vasinke.
Adiyam irudha madigara, yedha vasanu.
Ah.
Andha manshodhiyam manevi, avan thirkaanipimidu, avan oru tirkadarisi.
Yare? Avraham yare? Oru tirkadarisi.
Abraham was a prophet.
Abishyakam padchitiya, ni oru viswasiya, maritthiina, ni oru tirkadarisi, ni chonnada, kattar acceptunvaru.
If you are anointed, if you turn as a believer, whatever you tell, he will accept since you are a prophet.
Alala tha, vartey control panipesin solradu.
So I used to tell you, control your words.
Ah, onde vartegal, jivundukunna.
And there must be life in your words.
Abishyakam kudana.
And there must be anointing. There must be grace. And it must be the words seasoned with salt. You have to speak in a word. All the vain words, a man, he must hit account.
You can't think anything else, you have to think.
And whatever spills down, you can get back, and whatever words are spilled down, you cannot write it back.
When you are drunk, drink. 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 In the books, you have to drink. You have to drink. You have to drink. But you have to think.
In the words, I used to tell, if the wounds are healed with fire, it will be healed. That with the words, when they are hurt and it was wounded, it will not be healed.
So I said, when you are anointed and you are a prophet. You have to check.
And you can check and see.
If someone is speaking to you, tell and tell him the Lord will give you jobs. Surely the Lord will give him jobs.
You have to think. And what you say, it will be obeyed.
You have to say something, but you have to read the Bible. I have to read the Bible. I have to read it.
Sometimes it may be wrong words, and whatever words, it is utter from the mouth of God, servant of God, it will be prospered.
There is an Indian preacher, a Christian.
An Indian preacher called Diane, and he went to foreign countries to make a preaching.
I have told you.
I already have said.
At the end of the meeting, he came out. And there was urging. He said, I will give you a child. They said, we don't have a child, but sorry.
It is true that we do not have child, but sorry.
What?
There is no child, the Lord will give you a child.
The child is not true. My wife has a problem with you trust. They have removed it.
And there is no child, it is true that there is a you trust problem, and there is a you trust from my wife.
The Christian, you have to say. What is this? We said, we have a child.
And I told her to conceive a child, and there was no you trust, and I was so tense.
They went to India.
And he came to India.
Next year, they called for a sermon, and I said, I will not come. I will not come. I have a program.
And I have many programs.
I am very busy.
I am very busy.
But they don't have a ticket, you have to go.
And they told that we have applied for tickets.
They have blessed you.
And you must come here for preaching.
They said, I will not. I will go. But they will come here for preaching.
And he said, oh God, I am compelled, so I am going, and two persons should not come to the meeting for three days.
You have to read the Bible. They will come here for preaching. They will come here for preaching.
Don't put me in shame, and I go there until I come to India, they should not come to the meeting.
The first day of the meeting, they were not come, and he was so happily. The second day was over. And second day was over, he was become a victor. The last day of the meeting. At the end of the meeting. And when he started to depart the place, and two persons came. He saw a child.
And he looked into him, is there a child? There is no child.
How old, I prayed, but at last you made me to catch in this.
He was fixed. And the two persons came.
He didn't know how to tackle and face him.
And he said, praise the Lord, pastor. And the Lord is so faithful.
What is it? He said, I will not tell you.
And he was not giving an explanation, and he was so troubled.
You have to say.
And you uttered a prophecy on that day.
He said.
It was not said by you, it was said by God.
What is it? He said, I have a child. He said, what is it?
And I asked, what you want to say?
Pastor, you have to say. And what you told, it is true, the Lord is faithful, my wife is conceived right now. He took the you trust, and he went to the church.
And he was confused last, he said, and there is a remove you trust, now he was telling, he was conceived.
We have to check up. There is a new child. The doctor gave a certificate.
We went for a checkup, and he gave a certificate, and the girl is formed.
The child is removed. The Christian, because of that, he has a sister. There is a new child.
The home was removed, but he uttered the prophecy that he was uttered, so the Lord had made a new home, created a new home in her, and she was conceived right now.
You are a prophet. You have to say. You have to say.
Only God and God must proceed out of your mouth, and otherwise it will spill out of your mouth.
If there are any questions, you have to ask. Abishya, what did you say? You have to ask. If there are any questions, you have to ask. If there are no questions, you have to stop.
The words according to verification must proceed out of your mouth, and no vain words, and or else you must remain silent.
Abishya, 29th verse. If there is no question, you have to remain silent.
You are a prophet. You must be a good prophet. You must be a clear prophet. I have to say. When I preach, I used to tell, when you utter prophecy, you should not speak in unknown tongues. You have to speak in prayer or in the back. You have to say. You have to say.
The prophecy which you uttered, those who are behind them must understand.
You have to say.
And the word must reach into the people to whom you utter the prophecy.
You have to say. You have to say.
Shouting and leaping and chanting, if you speak with unknown tongues, and they could not understand.
You have to say. When the word comes, you have to say. You have to say.
And first word must come to you, you must identify whether it is for you or not, if it is for yourself, and you should utter the prophecy.
You have to say.
And when it is processed, it was in church, the spirit of God will speak.
You have to say.
And you should not add or decrease any word from it.
You have to say.
And for revival, and you should not add the speech and so on.
22 verse.
And what is mentioned, revelation, chapter 22.
In the book of Abraham, you have to eat.
29th verse. One of these prophets, who wrote the book of the book of Moses, who wrote it, died in the book of Moses, wrote to his brother David.
Who?
29th verse. One of these prophets, who wrote the book of Moses, wrote to his brother David.
Who wrote it?
His brothers.
His brothers.
And he will add the plagues in them.
You have to say.
Our words are so prophetic words, and we must be very careful in spiritual life.
You have seen the life of this woman, and it was a great life. She got married at a young age. Seven years.
And seven years, her husband was there.
He left.
At length, she was there.
He left.
And then she became a widow.
But she was very important.
So it is very important how she used her life.
She came here.
And sometimes there may be a challenging achievement that comes, transgressions become.
It was like a cycling.
It is like a cycle.
And valley and pit and mountains become. You have to live.
And life with her husband was only seven years.
After that, she lived.
Then after, she preserved the virginity.
She lived until 87 years. Some of the children, they have to marry.
And some, after the marriage, and even married two or three marriages.
But you have to see. She did not enter into the second step, and was not having any husband, and was taken person as my creator, as my husband. She changed her life. She got married, and she became a widow, and till 84 years she lived. After that, she was not a woman, but a God.
Then after, her life was not with a husband, but with God.
She became a holy widow. You have to read the Bible.
We can read about the group of widows in book of apostles.
1 verse.
When we look into Acts, chapter nine.
There is a group. 31 verse.
When he came to the church, he was not able to go. He was not able to go to the church. Then all the widows went. The priests and servants came to him, and they cursed him.
There is a group of saints of God, they are the widows. When we read about the vikdus and timathis. You have to say. But God is your God.
When we become, we know this world, that we will be foreshakers, that when we are up to God, and he is our creator.
After that, she changed her life. We have to make the situations favorable to us. Whatever the situation, circumstances, maybe you must make it favorable to you. Even the landscape must be favorable to you. You have to make favor the furnace of fire. Whatever part the Lord may lead you, you must be favorable to us. They said about cats. You have to say.
And however, it was pushed around, and it will stand in four foot.
You have to manage correctly, balance it.
It will balance itself, and it will stand in four foot.
And the Christian, he may go in any kind of situation, he will become a Christian. You have to say.
How she preserved her life of holiness from young age till the old age?
She left the church, and she left the church. She left the church. She said, I have a God. She said, I have a God.
Husband was dead, and everyone lifted me, approached me, and regarded me, and she was not more marrying at last, and said, so, my creator is my husband, and was living with him.
You have to say.
And even a single day, he was not complaining to God. And he did not ask any question to God.
He asked, why the Lord is taking me in such place? You have to say.
When husband was born dead, and would become a widow.
She continued her spiritual life.
And she started a spiritual journey from that day.
How she started?
When this incident happened in her life, and she did not go to backsliding state, and she went to the temple of God.
That was her life.
And that was a pick-up state for her life.
She went to the church. She went to the church. She went to the church.
And some, they become jobless, and they don't have any house, and they will be slowing down in the spiritual life, and they will go to the backsliding state.
You have to say.
And he does not like it.
She was young age, only seven years lived her life, at last he lost her life, and then. I went to a meeting.
At one place, I went to a meeting at Kerala.
First meeting, the people were so dumb. They were dumb. I asked the people, so revival, and they be revived in those days. At evening, there was a real service, so people were so dumb. I asked, what? I went to a church, and the boy left.
And one girl got married before seven days, and he was dead today.
He left. He went to the church.
And he met an accident, a jury, and after seven days, he was taken to his old house. How it will be?
But the children stayed. He said, I have a God.
And the girl was so confirmed, that without the knowledge of God, nothing will happen to me. Will we tell like that?
We asked God whether there is eyes for God.
There become a mistake.
You have to see.
Only seven years he lived, and what life he lived?
She left. She left. She left.
In the troublesome situation, not departing from heart, and she was not departing from the temple of God.
You are the temple of God.
The temple of God is holy.
She preserved living in the temple of God, and that is a life living in the temple of God. See, how it would be, you think that's. She changed. You have to say.
Healing, health, prosperity, joy, grief, and that is not behind this life, and she was spending time with God.
She changed.
The reason for all coming in life, and she was not going to anywhere has been, is she had not departed from the temple of God.
She changed.
And she had got such a train up in her life.
You have to change.
You must be turned like this.
You have to say. And you should not backslide, or backstrat, or be read, and you should not depart from the temple of God. And what is the law of the temple of God? He is a saint.
And all the places with temple of God, coast is holy.
She changed.
And chatting, or joking, or doing any other conversation, it is not her practice, and she sat in the temple of God, in the presence of God.
She changed.
And she never turned anywhere.
You have to see.
When we will read about the design of the law.
You have to see. In RC Bible, it is there. Judith. There is a book.
And they said about a woman called Judith.
She left.
And she was a great.
She left.
And husband was dead.
She was not departing her house.
And she used to stay in the house with prayer.
She left.
There was a war.
She was the reason behind the victory of the war. You have to see.
And the Lord let her there, because the Lord was with him.
There is a book.
And they had a book called Judith.
After coming to the spiritual life, when the problems comes, when the great and small things may come in your life, you should not depart from the temple of God. Yes. He came to the temple of God.
And Jesus came on eight days to the temple of God.
He was in the temple of God.
And 12 years, and he sat in the temple of God.
He was in the temple of God.
At 30th year, he was in the temple of God.
He moved to the temple of God. His mind is running towards the temple of God. He should not come away from the aspect of staying in the temple of God.
And they depart not from the temple of God. And they and night she are fasted.
In Christian life, we stay fasting.
You must understand. When we turn fasting, there is a limit for it.
They have to eat.
And some, they take too much of fasting and become a sick.
You must take fasting.
Only the spirit of God urges you, must take fasting. Once again, I repeat.
A Christian, a woman, three times.
A believer, a week must take fasting three times.
A weekly, five times.
A servant of God must take fasting five times a week.
They have to teach us.
There was a training which is given to us.
Bible study.
Bible study will not have.
Bible study, no, no.
On the day of the Bible study, morning and night.
You have to say.
And during meeting, morning and evening will not have.
Sunday morning.
And Sunday morning, no food.
Luke 18 verse. In Luke chapter 8, in a pharis, he said, twice a week I take fast. In Matthew 2 verse.
And 52 of Matthew said, so by Jesus, your righteous must be more than of this pharisee, or else you cannot come to the heaven.
At least, three times.
A believer must take fasting at least three times a week.
I ask you to tell it properly. You have to eat.
It doesn't matter that you have to take fasting for 10 days, at least three days fasting, you must take in a right way.
We have to eat.
And we will take fasting, and we will roam around.
We have to eat.
And we will turn fasting, and we will fight and cry.
We have to eat.
And turning fasting, we will see the TV serials.
We have to eat.
And turning fasting, and we will go to a relative's house.
We have to eat.
And turning fasting, we eat four bread.
We have to eat.
And turning fasting, we will drink three juices.
Or we will drink two cups of oats. You have to eat.
Turning so fasting, and without drinking water, you must take fasting, then you will go to heaven.
You have to eat.
And take fasting in the right way.
The woman, 84 years of old, and she was not departing from the temple of God, and take fasting nights and days. I have to say.
In a medical shop, it is written, fasting is a good medicine.
What is medicine? I have to eat.
And whatever is given to me, I will eat, and what is given to me will not be defined.
A servant of God ate in a hotel. The cashier looked at him. He asked, are you a pastor?
Yes. And he said, yes.
You have to eat.
If you eat like that, then how you will be a pastor?
Where is it? At faith home, and my brother came. He will never come and visit me, but he came.
I have to go. And very urgently, I must go out.
I have to go.
It is the house of God, it is a faith.
We have to eat.
And he said, he came for a program, there is a program, it is very urgent for me, I am departing, you give food, and he departed.
I have to eat.
And they have given a royal dainty to him, because since he was my brother.
I have to eat.
And he departed, and I also came to faith home.
I have to eat.
And next day, he came, spoke to me.
Yes. You have to eat.
And he said, sir, and you are taking some.
Eat. What is it? English, what is it? You have to eat.
And he preached everything, and he came in a saintly order.
He has to eat. He has to eat.
And he asked, you are eating like this, and how you take this well?
You have to eat.
And he said, and saints will eat a lot, and but you are not taking that order.
You have to eat.
And how you are saintly order, am I saintly order?
We have to eat.
And we eat well, and said so, and taking fasting.
You have to eat. Morning, he eats two slices bread. He eats. We have to eat. He has to eat. He has to eat. You have to eat.
And taking too much of drinks, and there is no fasting.
He has to eat.
And the lady woman was taking fasting deep and nights. And you have sucked your body.
You have to eat.
And only was not, overcoming this meat will not go to heaven.
You have to eat.
And when he was telling, today they have conducted a peace, I was taking fasting, their fasting is waste.
You have to eat. I have to eat. He has to eat. You have to eat. You have to eat.
And some used to ask them to preserve the food, and they were not able to eat during the fasting, and fasting is waste.
Muslims.
And the Muslims will take fasting.
He has to eat.
From morning 6 to evening 6, and they will not even sleep.
He has to eat. He has to eat. We have to eat. You have to eat.
And these are deserving, and this is not a proper fasting.
How God, Jesus took fasting?
How Jesus took fasting?
You have to eat. He has to eat.
He did not drink, not for forty days, day and nights.
29th verse. He was a saint.
He was a saint. Next, you have to eat. He has to eat. Is it? Hmm? Is it? He has to eat.
When he took fasting, he did not eat and drink.
Look. 44 verse. 44 verse. Why Moses was a saint? He has to eat.
At the clubs of the mountain, and there was no other food, and he was taking fasting for 70s.
29th verse. He was a saint.
He did not eat on those days.
You have to eat.
And you must connect fasting in some of the churches, I have made a fasting without any.
You have to eat. You have to eat.
You can wash your face, and you should brush, and you can come to the meeting, you should not even have water, at 9 o'clock, they will start the prayer, but 1 o'clock will be ended up.
I have to eat.
And I have conducted those times.
3 hours of kneeling prayer. I have kept a competition. If it could not, impossible, and you can stand behind. He has to eat.
If it could not, impossible, and you can stand behind.
He has to eat.
And some used to tell, unwillingly, I was not, while I was falling down, but without my knowledge, I fell down.
We have to eat. He has to eat.
And they are trying to stand on knees for three hours, but our people even the middle is longer time under the.
He has to eat.
And three hours of time, he stood like that.
How are you able to stand on knees? He has to eat.
And there was a pastor at Tirupur, and he was conducting the prayer regarding the.
He is a Christian.
And her wife was a believer.
He has to eat.
And whenever the kneel prayer comes back, and he will depart.
I have to eat. I have to eat.
I asked, you are so old, and how you are able to stand knees? I was committing the prayer, so I was able to stand.
He has to eat.
And the doctors say, and you could not stand on knees, but still I was able to stand on knees for three hours.
He has to eat.
And day and night fasting.
He has to eat.
Day and night, he fasted and prayed.
He has to eat.
And she how her practice.
He has to eat.
Only enjoyment and entertainment for us is prayer, standing on knees.
He has to eat.
And how we did not be bold with prayer.
He has to eat.
And Lord spoke to her.
He has to eat.
And she was speaking.
He has to eat.
And got a vision.
He has to eat.
And got an anointing.
He has to eat.
And she could not know how the time is passing.
He has to eat. At that day she got to sleep and slumber she slept well. And Lord made her to sit like a child sitting in the cart. And she could not see the face but one was sitting near her. Then she entered into the presence of God. And she could realize well and someone is playing the part. They started to pray well. When the person was telling the prayer point and they both are praying well at last it was. Are you praying like this? In our prayers we used to tell or close your eyes and start praying at last we will have contentions and findings that we will depart from the place. And Jesus said and you watch with me for one hour. Not with wife or husband or children and you must stand with me for one hour. And you and him so to start please start. At eighty four age she was able to pray with God the ravenry practices and she is having the connectivity with God. She prayed and worshipped him. At worship time you must return like a David. When worship time comes it was not a church it become a road to. It took the ark of God and keep to home. Once he came. He came silent and now he was died on that day. And second he came. And there was a street he go to presence of God. How David did? When worship time comes it was not a church it become a road to. It took the ark of God and keep to home. Once he came. He came silent and now he was died on that day. And second he came. With all stern he started to dance in the presence of God near the ark. You should not open your eyes during the worship session and you must come with full spleen. Are we rejoicing in the law? And that woman when she was brought to the temple of God she started to praise God. She praised God and spoke about him. And we have to speak more about God in our life. The word which you proceed out of your mouth must be gospel, truth, or doctrine of the word of God. One day a teacher they used to speak for eight hours a day. Nine o'clock they will entrance and they have to shout like anything. And you are so shouting for the money not for God. I am sorry I am not talking to you. And not with about he when she speak only about Jesus. And such a life is there. They so say Lord give me such a life let close your eyes and stand on knees. And we cannot tell I will going to grow old and she will tell I was eighty so eighty four years old and you were sixty years. You must receive the grace. You must receive the anointing. And you must receive grace and favor from the God. You must see the face of God. You must become a blessed. And you will because they won't receive grace and favor. You should not depart the temple of God. You must fast day and night. Pray well and you must worship him. You must speak only about him. The Lord give us a grace according to this life. Open your mouth and ask Lord give me that grace. For two minutes. The power of God come and control over you.